Going to call the Board of Education for Wednesday, November 20th, 2019 order at 7:00 PM. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber.
Present.
Mr. Solora.
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
And Mrs. Defavio with that.
If you'd all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any of my colleagues or Superintendent Powers have any changes to our agenda?
That's right, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to continue on with my president's report. Again, good evening and welcome to the students, staff, and families from Wilcox Primary, George G. Dodge Intermediate, and Twinsburg High School. This is the meeting for Wednesday, November 20th, 2019. I am Rob Felber and it's my pleasure to serve as President of the Board. Well, tonight is the last televised board meeting of 2019, and I wanted the largest audience for my report. I want to tell you about a man that has served the district and community for the past four years. My colleague, Ms. Solora, I'm going to try to get through this, has been a member, Vice President, and President of the Board of Education. Board members can and have witnessed the work he so selfishly has done for the students of Twinsburg. However, only a President of the Board can really know what it's like to be center seat with all eyes on you. Matt, you have handled this office with dignity. This man has more heart, energy, and integrity than many I've worked with in my career. Matt, time and time and again, has shown fairness in his decisions, understanding during difficult negotiations, and the willingness, sometimes solely, to roll up his sleeves and complete the most difficult tasks. You see us occasionally at a bi-monthly board meeting. Know that each board member sits on two to three committees that also meet, sometimes for hours each month. Despite many late-night sessions, Matt always remained fair and objective. I personally will miss how he definitely breaks down a spreadsheet and interprets a policy change. But Matt, I'll most of all miss working with you. Please do not be a stranger, and more importantly, please do not stop caring. You have a beautiful family and remain a critical asset to our community. And that concludes my president's report. Superintendent Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the kind words to Mr. Solora. I know that we all agree with you and will definitely miss Mr. Solora on the Board, and there'll be much more to be said in December, but we appreciate the fact that that was said here and recorded for our community as well, and we appreciate all that he's done in his time on the Board of Education. So, Board of Education, we have a lot of things to celebrate this evening, we have a lot of students to celebrate, because our kids are outstanding, but we're going to get to that in a minute because I have a couple of announcements to make this evening. First of all, we want to thank all of our schools, our students especially, our staff members. Ms. Browning's here from Wilcox. So many wonderful things happened last week in celebration of our veterans, and if you were at RBC on Thursday, or at Wilcox on Friday, or at Bissell this past Monday, it was a fantastic celebration honoring the veterans of our country. And one individual over at Wilcox came up to a member of our staff, and I'm not going to say which veteran it was, but he said to me, you know, he said, "In my time serving and in my time since then, it's always been the school district that has said thank you." And it means the world to him that the kids pause in their lessons and that they take some time to thank the veterans and to understand what it means to stay in service to our country. So, boys and girls, if you had any part in any of that last week and this week, thank you so very much because you made the world of difference for some very special ladies and gentlemen in our community, and just keep doing what you're doing because it does mean a lot to a lot of people. So, thank you very much for that. We want to congratulate Twinsburg High School's Drama Club. If you saw the presentation, the performance last week of Trap, I was sitting on the edge of my chair because I didn't know what was going to happen, and it was such a great performance. So, congratulations to our Drama Club students at the high school, as well as our advisor, Ms. Erin Bennett, just did such a great job. And as a former Drama Club student in high school, I appreciate that hard work that goes into putting out a presentation, and the kids did a fantastic job over at the high school last weekend. Board of Education, as you know, this evening on the agenda is the 2020-2021 academic calendar. And about a month ago, the Board of Education had a public hearing about the calendar. And just to explain how the calendar gets developed, several months ago, a committee of staff members sat down and they proposed three separate calendars. And then those calendars were vetted through a process that we have in our school district with our staff members, and we take the calendar that has the most favor to it and present that to Board of Education. They propose the calendar to the community then, and then provide at least thirty workdays for the community to provide input about the calendar. So, the calendar this evening that is on the agenda is the calendar that was proposed about thirty or some days ago. And Board of Education, I have to tell you, most of the feedback I got was quite positive, and I've sent those all to you as far as the emails go. So, we appreciate if you took the time to drop us a note to tell you, tell us what you thought about the calendar, and it is our hope that this evening the Board will authorize the calendar because many parents are starting to plan their summer vacations now, and they want to know when the first day of school is. So, that's why it's so early in the year, and it provides plenty of opportunity for folks to give feedback before it actually becomes approved by the Board of Education. So, we appreciate if you offered any ideas around the calendar. Board of Education, as Mr. Felber just indicated, this is the last time that we're here in this space for a Board of Education meeting. We don't actually come back here until February because the next several board meetings are off the first and third Wednesdays of the week, and when we don't hold our board meetings on the first and third Wednesdays, and we have to go to the second and fourth, this room is used for other city business. So, that means that the next three board meetings will actually be held across the street in Twinsburg High School at the Large Group Instruction Room. So, if you have an interest in joining us, that's where we'll be meeting. And the next board meeting is Wednesday, December 11th. We only have one board meeting in December, and that is primarily due to the fact that we have lots of concerts going on and lots of student activities, and you really can't find more than just one Wednesday for a board meeting. So, that is the next board meeting, Wednesday, December 11th, and it will be held across the street in the LGI Large Group Instruction Room at Twinsburg High School. So, that's all I have this evening, Board of Education. Without further ado, I know that I've seen Ms. Lynn Villa in the audience, and she wants to celebrate a lot of great students from Wilcox Primary School, so welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Good evening, Board of Education. Mrs. Butros is going to come and join me so she can help our little ones come on up. So, if you don't know, Mrs. Butros, she is our wonderful school counselor. We love having her at Wilcox, and I'm sure, boys and girls, you all know her. Every month, we have the honor of introducing to you some of our Wilcox students who rock. Every morning, we start the day with our Wilcox pledge where we all promise to be responsible, respectful, caring, and safe. And throughout the year, our teachers teach the children what those really big words mean when they're in the classroom, when they're in the hallway, when they're on the bus, all those things. So, on each of their certificates, the teachers wrote something about, that's special about that child, but just so that you know, when we introduce them, they are all demonstrating that really good citizenship, being hard workers, good friends, and helpers. So, boys and girls, when we call you up, we're going to say your name, and then we're going to come on up, and Mrs. B. is going to help you. We're going to do some handshaking, and then line up up here. And some of our teachers were able to join us tonight, so if the teacher is here, please come on up because they are the rocks behind our students. Okay, so first up, we have Anna Kraus, and she's a first grader in Mr. Hill's class. Anna is a really kind and caring young lady. She is a hard worker. Mr. Hill says he can always count on Anna. Yay, I'm so proud of you, can I squeeze? Next, we have Charlotte Lamb in Ms. Browning's first grade class. Charlotte goes by Charlie, and she is so eager to learn, and she's full of energy that she just glows when she comes to school. She's also a good friend and a really great helper. Wait, I need a hug too. I'm proud of you, good job. Our next first grader is Brady Oul in Ms. Litness's class. And here comes Brady and Ms. Litness. Look, they're going to come up together. Brady is a wonderful young man. He works hard, and he's a true leader in the classroom and a friend to everyone. We are so happy and proud of you, Brady. Okay, squeeze for me. Proud of you, good job. Our kindergartners tonight are Roxanna Riveron from Ms. Washington's class. Is Roxanna here? Yes, she is. Come on up. Ms. Washington says that Roxanna is a kind and caring individual, she's polite and respectful when interacting with her peers, and she is always prepared for class. We are super proud of her. Yay, so proud of you, good job. Our next kindergartner is Dylan Blake from Mrs. Hannah's class. Here's Dylan. Mrs. Hannah says that Dylan comes to school every day so excited that it is contagious. She has a love for learning and always tries her best. Oh, thank you. And next, we have Michael Queen from Mrs. Lowe's class, and I know Mrs. Lowe is here too. Here he comes, and here comes Mrs. Lowe. Mrs. Lowe said, "Michael is very deserving of this award. He comes to school with a smile on his face. He tries to do his best work no matter what is asked of him. He's kind and a helpful friend to all." So happy for you too, Michael, I'm so proud of you. And we also have two preschoolers to recognize tonight. The first one is Carmella Smith from Mrs. Farrell's class, and I know Mrs. Farrell is here too. And Mrs. Bender, that's good that Mrs. Bender's coming up too. Carmella is kind to all of her classmates and her teachers. She is the first one to respond when a teacher asks for help, and she always seeks out ways that she can assist others. I'm so proud of you too, can I squeeze? Love your band. And Victoria Turner from Mrs. Wells' class is also here to join us tonight. Here she comes. Victoria is Tori, come on, nice.
She's good.
Oh, my goodness.
Tori comes to school each day ready to learn. She always has a smile on her face, and she's respectful to the adults and students in her room by listening, showing kindness to everyone, and following directions. Okay, I'm not going to get one, can I squeeze? Oh, thank you, good job, proud of you. And ladies and gentlemen, these are our Wilcox Rock students for November. Okay, so, boys and girls, put your certificates right in front of your tummy, make sure we can see your face with a big giant smile, and we'll get those photo ops for Facebook. And one more round of applause for our Wilcox kids, and you could go join your moms and Mrs. Bender, you can stay with us, though. So, we do have amazing staff at Wilcox. Every one of them works super hard to make sure our kids are growing and learning every day. And we get the wonderful opportunity to recognize Mrs. Bender today. Mrs. Bender actually was nominated by Mrs. Butros for our Wilcox Rock Staff Award, and I'm going to read to you what Mrs. Butros said. She said, "Kathy has the biggest heart. She is extremely generous and thoughtful of others. When interacting with students, she greets them with unconditional love whether or not she knows them. Not only is she compassionate towards our students, but our staff as well. She's dependable, she's always the first person to volunteer her own time to help others in need. For example, she hasn't missed a week of volunteering at school to help pack weekend food bags for those in need. She goes above and beyond for any student or staff that may be in a less fortunate situation, whether it's medical, financial, or personal. Big or small, she's the first to show up and to try to make a positive impact." Wilcox rocks because of Kathy Bender. And that is our Wilcox Rocks for this month. Mrs. Powers?
Thank you so very much. So, now we'd like to ask Mr. Holland come forward. We have wonderful students and staff to celebrate from George G. Dodge Intermediate School. Good evening.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Powers, as well as Wilcox. We're going to have our student presenters come forward at this time. As we are, as our students are coming forward, I did want to just take a moment to thank the Dodge PTA. This month, we'd also like to recognize all the wonderful work that the PTA is doing with us this, this time of the year. We've had so many wonderful programs, and I just wanted to highlight a couple. One was with our Father Daughter Dance. We've had over 500 fathers participate in this last round of Father Daughter Dance. It was some very exciting things, and we want to thank our PTA, and I will do another plug. If you haven't yet joined the Dodge PTA, there's still lots of opportunity to join that as well. But part of why we wanted to recognize our PTA is because the partnership between parents and school is essential. And so, one of the other events that we had this year that we're extremely proud of was our Career Day. And our Career Day is an opportunity for our young people to develop their leadership skills, which you'll see in just a minute, but it's also an opportunity for them to see different kinds of career opportunities that are out there. What makes Dodge's Career Day special, I believe, is the fact that the people that come in and present to Dodge are our community members. They are parents of our, of our students, parents of students at the elementary buildings and at the high school that have given up their day at their various careers to just make sure our kids have opportunities to see all the things that shine. Our kids were so excited. So, as I get ready to turn this over, I'll just tell you one story. We have one parent that works for the Calves, and so they were up talking in the gym and sharing some information with the kids, and one student came down, and he had gotten his Skyzone Pass, and he came running across the playground to show me, and I thought something was wrong, and I was like, "What's going on?" And he said, "I had the most exciting presentation that you ever believed. You've got to go up there and see it, Mr. Holland." So, I just wanted to know, our parents are really impacting our students day to day, and I thank them for their involvement in this process and the beginning steps of helping us to develop our leaders. So, at this time, I'm going to turn this over to our student leaders.
Like Mr. Holland said, one of the greatest traditions we have at Dodge is using our students as leaders. So, I'd like to present to you tonight the sixth grade student leaders from Mrs. Haas and Mrs. Widener's class.
Good evening. My name is Elliot Edelhite, character counts at George D. Dodge Intermediate School. The following students were selected by their teachers at Dodge because they have represented and exemplified the qualities of outstanding leadership, citizenship, academic performance and efforts, social skills, and overall accomplishments. The character word for fourth grade students for this quarter is respect. Respect means that we follow the golden rule. We are tolerant of differences, use good manners, and not poor language, are considerate of feelings of others, do not threaten, hit, or hurt anyone, and deal peacefully with anger, insults, and disagreements. The fourth grade students for the month from Ms. MacArthur and Ms. Palmer homeroom are Gabriella Caracello and Jeremiah Carvelo.
My name is Ruben Krieger. The character word for fifth grade students for this quarter is caring. Caring means that one is kind, compassionate, and protective. It means that one expresses gratitude, forgives others, and helps people in need. Caring students are also charitable and selfless. The fifth grade students of the month from Mrs. Zirock and Mrs. Maitan's homerooms are
Good evening. My name is Ava Heeshank. The character word for sixth grade students for this quarter is citizenship. Being a good citizen means you do your share to make your school and community better. You cooperate, you get involved in community affairs, you stay informed, vote, you are a good neighbor, you obey laws and rules, you respect authority, you protect the environment, and you volunteer in your school, community, and community at large. The sixth grade students of the month from Mrs. Haas and Mrs. Widener's homerooms are Morgan Mayfield and Deacon Nelson.
So, at this time, I need all of my students of the month to just make sure your cars are up, and parents, this is a great time for you to get those lovely picture shots. Go ahead, get in there, don't be afraid. As we talk about leadership at Dodge, we know that we could not do any of this without the leadership of our staff members, and there are a lot of them that joined us tonight to celebrate their students. So, Dodge staff, please stand so we can recognize you and your hard work.
At this time, we'd like to invite the high school up to recognize their students. Thank you, boys and girls, nice job.
Now, I understand Dr. Hebert was, she's out of town, and I have to pinch-hit for her, so I understand what she's saying when we have to follow up the cute young kids, and now here comes the big ugly kids. Let off by me. Obviously, our kids aren't ugly. But anyways, we do have some quality staff and kids that we'd like to recognize today. And we want to start off with our, our award for staff, Ms. Candace Wolf. Candace actually is very sick today, not to put her business on the street, but she actually emailed later this afternoon saying that if she came here tonight, she probably wouldn't make it to school tomorrow because she's not feeling so hot. So, she wants to make sure she gets to school tomorrow, we appreciate that. So, I still want to recognize her. Earlier this year, Mrs. Wolf was selected as the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award. This award has existed for more than thirty years. Each year, the university invites new first-year students to nominate an educator who has influenced them, challenged them, or helped them along the path towards intellectual growth. Inspired by teachers who have changed the course of their lives, these students recognize teachers such as Mrs. Wolf, who teach them to reimagine text, to delve deeper into problem-solving, and to think beyond borders of their classroom. Students at Twinsburg High School, when asked about their academic experience, often cite Mrs. Wolf as one teacher who understands that students learn in multiple ways. For instance, one student spoke of how Mrs. Wolf used Vigo's paintings to describe symbolism and to connect it to various works that they read in class. Using multiple mediums, Mrs. Wolf teaches life lessons through literature and language and treats her students like the young adults they are. Writing is a safe place to form opinions through open dialogues, free from judgment. One student even went as far as to identify a quote that Mrs. Wolf has on her door, says, "I am part of all that I have met," and states that Mrs. Wolf is one part, but a substantial part of who she is as a person today. I can give no higher praise for an amazing teacher, so we'd like to recognize Mrs. Candace Wolf for her wonderful selection, the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award. Next, I'd like to call up Sahaj Bombra. Sahaj, the National Merit Scholarship Program recognizes approximately 34,000 commended students throughout the nation for their exceptional academic promise. Sahaj placed among the top 50,000 scores of more than 1.6 million students who entered the 2019 competition by taking the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in 2018. So, congratulations tonight, Sahaj Bombra. Next, I'd like to call up Alyssa Deeds. Alyssa couldn't make it tonight, but we'd like to recognize her for a cross-country state qualifier. Alyssa's a four-time cross-country regional qualifier, two-time state qualifier, three-time All-Suburban League First Team honoree, having only missed being a four-time honoree due to missing the league meet her sophomore year due to injuries. Alyssa is the third fastest female cross-country athlete in our school's history. She was instrumental in leading the girls' team to 2016 state championship meet and has been one of our top team runners all of her four years. So, congratulations, Alyssa Deeds. I'd like to call up Allison Shank. In starting off, recognizing our students of the month for being respectful. Ally Shank's not only a respectful student, she's exceptional. Ally has volunteered in the multi-handicap classroom since last year. She comes in to volunteer any second of any time she gets. She has always been respectful to staff in the classroom and throughout the school. She represents her peers as well as anybody. However, most importantly, she respects the students in the MH classroom, she treats them as her equal. She shows them love, friendship, dignity, and respect. She truly honors them in every way. The maturity she shows in the MH classroom and towards those students is very rare. Ally absolutely deserves to be the student of the month. The level of respect we see from Ally is genuine and always from the heart. Our next student of the month for being respectful, I'd like to call up Sanjay Moore. Sanjay is truly a model student who leads by example in class and demonstrates great respect for others and for learning. She's always kind to everyone and is one of the first to offer help anytime anyone has questions or needs anything. This helps foster a positive and welcoming learning environment in her class and sets a great example for other students. She's also very respectful by demonstrating a positive attitude, great focus and participation in class activities, always giving 100% effort, which shows that what it takes, and she takes advantage of every day and every opportunity to learn and grow. Our next student of the month for respectful, Dorcas Falcon. Dorcas is an exemplary student who always demonstrates great respect for others, both students and teachers alike. She's always kind, helpful to her classmates, always happy to work with different students. She is, always has a positive attitude, great sense of humor, that combined with her outstanding work ethic and participation in class activities, really helps promote a positive and enjoyable collaborative learning environment. Congratulations, Dorcas Fallican. Last but not least, I'd like to call up Ernie Phillips. Ernie has established himself at the high school as a student of honesty and integrity. He strives to do his best in class and always has a friendly demeanor. Ernie's respectful to each of his classmates and works with them with the understanding that they need. His caring nature translates throughout the hallways and through the staff at THS. Ernie is a well-rounded individual who's set for positive growth throughout his whole high school career and his experience. Congratulations, Ernie Phillips. Thanks again to the Board of Education, Mrs. Powers. That's our Twinsburg High School update.
Board of Education, I think that my favorite part of having three schools here is you see our small, smallest students, and in this case, we had preschoolers all the way up to our high school seniors, and it is so great to see the progression and the success of our students. So, we thank everyone for being here this evening. Mr. Felber, this concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers, and we do have a long night ahead of us, lots of business. You're more than happy to stay. This is usually the time where everybody rushes for the door, homework, dinnertime, what have you, so... have you, so if you'd like to go, now, now you may.
Thank you. You're very welcome. All right. Thank you, good night.
Still fairly quiet, so I'm going to go ahead and move on to committee reports, and I know finance has a committee tomorrow, business advisory on the twenty-sixth, and do any of my colleagues have any reports? Okay. Remonstrance, do we have any blue cards, Mr. Aho?
No blue cards.
No blue cards. Okay. The board does have need for an executive session at this point, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at seven thirty-one to discuss the specialized details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols where disclosure might reveal information that could jeopardize the district's security as per the Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-six-G. I've made that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
And the board is now in executive session, that motion carries four-zero. We do anticipate continuing the rest of our meeting when we reconvene. From executive session, Mr. Aho, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DiFavio's absent.
At, well, yeah, at eight oh-one. Thank you, Mark, for reminding. All right, we will now move on to treasuries, reporting recommendations, and without objection from my colleagues, I will read one through four together. I one resolved that the Twins Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, and special meeting of October twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, as sent to the board under separate cover. Two, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of September two thousand nineteen. Bank Reconciliation General Fund Financial Summary Report and Financial Report by Fund as sent to the board under separate cover. Three, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of September two thousand nineteen. The total, including payroll, is five million ninety thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and seventy cents. And finally, I four, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approved the Twinsburg City School District five-year forecast for school years two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-four. Is there a motion for those four items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Discussion, Marty, anything in particular?
Yeah, the five-year forecast, this is the typical, you know, cycle for the five-year forecast, although currently, they've extended it another month, so usually it's done in October, now it's done in November, but it's basically the same thing, same forecast that gets updated every, every year in the fall and then again in the springtime, so.
There was no surprises, as we all said, it's all trending, we're
Yeah, we're expecting, yeah, we're expecting.
Discussing.
TPP reimbursements are not coming back, am I correct?
No.
Yeah, tangible's gone. That's, we've been talking about that for a long time, and that it's actually in the process of, we're losing about half a million dollars a year on that final leg of the reimbursement's going away, you know, it's nine point eight million dollars to start with, over the next five years, it'll be zero, so, you know, as that goes away, that, you know, is an issue that needs to be dealt with, but, you know, we've, we've seen that storm coming, and I think we're kind of prepared for it.
Have the reserve, but now the reserve is being tapped
Yeah.
By what we, what we saw coming.
And the only other thing that I would add is that, you know, with respect to the funding formulas that have changed frequently over the last two bienniums, actually more than that, but two bienniums to me, there is discussion, you know, in the legislature right now, their funding bill, but for developing the five-year forecast and for purposes of Marty's job, that isn't something that we can factor in, we never do, we look at what, what we're getting in the way of revenue, and that's what we plan on, and that's what we forecast on, so.
All right, any further comments? Roll call.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and those four items pass four-zero. And now move on to J action items, personnel, and again, without objection, I will read J one, two, and three. J one, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit J one, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. J two, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit J two, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And finally, three, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit J three, as per the terms, dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for those three items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Davis, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. We do have, congratulations, and I've never been able to pronounce John's last name.
Reeve.
Reeve, yeah, and one of my kids actually had him, but he's served thirteen years of the district, and congratulations on his retirement that's effective June twenty. Mrs. Powers, any other further highlights?
The only other thing that might be of interest is, because we're just kicking off our, our winter sports season, you'll see that our head girls' basketball coach is going to be missing twenty-seven percent of the season. Congratulations to Coach Raider and her husband, Chris, they just delivered a baby girl last week, and so for that twenty-seven percent of the contract that she won't be with us, and the date's noted, Mr. Russ Chapel will be serving as the substitute coach, so that's the reason for that leave of absence in part.
Any further comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and those three items pass four-zero. Now move on to Section K, action items, new business, again, without objection, reading one through six. K one, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the attached listing of media center items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit K one. Two, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts a donation from Ohio Pile Prints of Ohio Pile, PA, to the Twinsburg High School in the amount of two hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents, donation for the sale of Twinsburg apparel at local retailers to be used for miscellaneous instructional supplies per the attached exhibit K two. Three, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves and adopts the attached two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one academic calendar, and that's K three. Four, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the continuous improvement plans for the Twinsburg City School District, Twinsburg High School, B. Chairman Middle School, George G. Dodge Intermediate School, and Samuel Bissel Elementary School, and Wilcox Primary School as sent to the board under separate cover. Five, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves a memorandum of understanding for the Ohio Online Learning Program sponsored by the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for online curriculum provided by the Lincoln Learning Solutions and Edge Annuity on an as-needed basis. Course charges are three hundred dollars per standard semester course for grades three through five, two hundred dollars per semester for grades K through two, and a hundred fifty dollars for point-two-five credit courses. Courses charged for grade six through twelve are three hundred dollars per standard semester course and a hundred seventy-five dollars for credit recovery semester course. This is a general fund expenditure as sent to the board under separate cover. And finally, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves a job description for the secretary to the Director of Student Wellness per the attached exhibit K six. Is there a motion for those six items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Thank you again for donations, I think that the retail's kind of like what you see at Rite Aid and different places. CVS, where you see Twinsburg, so that's kind of cool that we do see that. Academic calendar, Mrs. Powers mentioned in her report, that we, we are now at the thirty-day period of where we can approve this after hearing from the public, so that was read at the, what was that, October sixteenth meeting? CIPs as were, that were presented, and Mrs. Powers, anything on the MOU with Ohio Online?
Just Board of Education, this is a renewal of a contract that you previously approved. We don't use this very frequently, every now and then, we have a student, particularly at the high school, we've not used this for any other grade of student. The chat program may not work for certain reasons, and sometimes the traditional classroom doesn't work either, and so this gives us an option, working with the EC to provide curriculum for a particular student.
On an as-needed.
Right.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and those six items pass four-zero. Moving on to K seven, this is a memorandum of understanding with the City of Twinsburg School Resource Officers, whereas the City of Twinsburg, Ohio, and the Twinsburg City School District Board of Education has a School Resource Officer Program currently in place, and whereas HB three-one-eight, one hundred and thirty-second General Assembly established the training requirements for SROs and required parties to enter in a memorandum of understanding, which, among other things, further clarifies the purpose of the SRO program and the respective roles and expectations of the parties. And whereas the parties have drafted a MOU in accordance with the statutory requirements which do into, due to timeline, time deadlines, time is of the essence in approving the MOU. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Twinsburg City School District, Summit County, Ohio, and the Superintendent and Board President be hereby is authorized to approve and execute the draft MOU with the City of Twinsburg, Ohio, in substantiality the same form as sent to the board under separate cover. Any changes in the execution copy being deemed by their signatures. Is there a motion for this MOU as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Discussion? Mrs. Powers, anything further to add on this one?
No, not this evening.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Roll call.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and that item passes four-zero. Any of my colleagues have anything for Miss Laneus?
Yeah, actually, I do. I want to piggyback on some of the remarks that you made on your president's report on Mr. Felber, specific to Mr. Solera and his, and his service on the board, this is the last televised meeting, so I wanted to make sure that I took an opportunity to acknowledge a lot of the things that Mr. Solera has done. I have to think back, it's been three, we've been through three election cycles. I didn't recognize that. First met Mr. Solera the first time that we decided to run, it was a packed field, didn't know him, he didn't know me, but we got to know each other as a result of having run together, and we've been friends since that time. I know our time on the board, we got to really know each other better, but more as colleagues, and I got to say, I have respect for all, you know, everyone that I've served with, but the extent to which we've both learned from each other has been pretty extensive. We've, we've, we've had some, some real deep conversations on a number of topics, and it just speaks to our ability to come to consensus while not always agreeing with one another, but the bottom line is that there's mutual respect, and that goes a long way for me, is the fact that you can express an opinion, and so can I, and we meet each other in the middle, and I think we've been able to do that over the last four years, and it's, to me, it's, it's one of the most gratifying aspects of serving as a board member, but more importantly, one of the things that I've come to know about Mr. Solera is that he's, he doesn't do things for self-reignition, he's not a very flashy person, and that's just by nature. What Mr. Solera does is work extremely hard, he's given much of his time, he's given money, he's given effort, all for purposes of doing what's right for the district and doing what's right for kids. He's an amazing father, and he's also a veteran, and I have a lot of respect for the sacrifices that he's made prior to serving on this board. As Mr. Felber alluded to earlier, he's one of the people that understands what it's like sitting in the presidency. He was my vice president as I served as president, and I got to say that he was a rock for me. There are a lot of moments in time where I needed guidance, I needed perspective, I needed honesty, you know, with respect to feedback, and he was always there to give it to me, and, you know, I'll, I'll never forget that, so I just wanted to say thank you, and that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you over the last four years.
Thank you.
I'll keep it simple, because they've said a lot, and, you know, a lot that I, of course, do agree with. Now, we all, all five of us have all bring, brought different strengths and qualities and attributes, and I just appreciate all the hard work you've done and how you, how you dive into some of the things that we're looking at and seeing things from other perspectives and helping us along with maybe some things we may not have noticed or may have slipped by, and, and like I said, we all have five different ideas, opinions, but we've generally respectfully come together and try to work towards better solutions for our schools and for the kids, and I just, you know, appreciate everything that you've done to help us out and to contribute to, to our board and moving us in the path that we needed to go.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words tonight, I was not expecting it at all. It's been a quick four years, we've done a lot in these four years. I think the place we're at now is a, is a real good place, got a lot of things coming up. I've appreciated every opportunity I've had to, had to serve with my colleagues up here, as well as Mr. Aho, Superintendent Powers, you guys' administrative team. We've buckled down a lot the last four years, kind of a lot accomplished. Could not have wished for anything different these past four years, we've had our ups and we've had our downs, but, you know, in the end, everybody, you know, did what we needed to do, and we've put this district in a better place now, today, than we were four years ago. I'm not going anywhere, looking forward to the opportunity to serve in some different aspects, help out with some, some other organizations, still continue to be, be a part here. My ears are always open if you ever need, need, need to make a call, and I'm sure I'll be calling you too, just like, just like previous board members have done with us over the years, you know, so, you know, it's, it's been an honor to serve this community, to serve alongside everybody up here, and I truly appreciate it, wouldn't change for anything, and look forward to watching you guys bring this district forward. Thank you.
Mr. Solera, just like everybody else before, you have unlimited access to my voicemail. I will take it. Mrs. Powers or Mr. Aho, anything you put you on the spot?
Just happy Thanksgiving.
All right.
And I do want to mention yesterday's Fall Sports Banquet, on another note, what an, it was an excellent, excellent program, and we had hundreds of parents and kids show up, and what, what I always find remarkable, too, is when they present the Suburban League Academic Awards, and they have to keep pushing the kids back further and further to the stage and further to the stage because they're side by side lining up on the stage with their certificates for earning a 3.5 or better, some very much higher, in the fall, and that's not easy to do when you've got a commitment of practice and games and schoolwork, and some kids have jobs, and it shows that our students are just exceptional and they're working so hard for these achievements. But it was just a really great program, and it was just excellent to be a part of. So that's my little commercial on that.
All right. Real fast, too, Mr. Felber. Dodge talked about it today, Father-Daughter Dance was attended, my fifth one, my fifth final one, so it was a little sad, but it was amazing to see that grow and to see all the dads and all the girls all dressed up all nice and pretty. The girls had a blast. PTA put on a fantastic thing. Looking forward to their mother-son event and being able to help out with that in the spring, as well as was also able to attend the RBC Metta's Day Concert. Again, the amount of work and effort that the staff puts in to these things and what the kids do was second to none, and so that's always honorable to see that and see the smiles on the faces of, you know, veterans that I've seen in my time going to these different things at the schools, and you kind of, you see them once a year, you get to see the smiles and how happy they are and how happy the actual, the kids are at breakfast and, you know, a little snack with them. So always amazed at the things that go on in this district, you know, above and beyond the academic day, so it was always good. And, yeah, you guys may have to think about building a bigger stage and moving that event because it was, it was a lot of people, a lot of people up there last night were good.
Good to hear. Anything further?
No, and then, real quick, you just briefly talked about all the hard work that we're going to be moving ahead with in the, in the spring, winter and spring continuing on, and we'll be, Mrs. Gordon will be joining us, and I think she's ready to just jump right in and dive right in, so we're going to, you know, continue on the work that we've been working on and moving forward.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else, move on to, and the Board does have need for executive session, so I will again, once again, make the motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 8:22 to discuss the employment compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 01668, and review negotiations with public employees concerning the compensation or other terms and conditions of employment per Board of Education Policy 0166E. I've made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
And the Board is now in executive session. At this time, we do not expect any further business when we reconvene. Mr. Roll.